Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the last public meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the year 2016.
You're just gonna read it?
I usually don't read it directly.
Great.
Thank you once again for your patience, greatly appreciate it, and welcome this evening. We have a decent agenda here. Let us begin with taking roll call. Mr. Secretary, if you would please do that.
Certainly. Mr. D'Amelio?
Here.
Mr. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. McGarrett?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Leavitt?
Here.
And Mr. Connell?
Here. If everyone will please rise for the opening prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, I would also like Assistant Township Manager, Mr. Denny, to come up first.
I just wanted to let the people here know that our opening prayer tonight is by Reverend Nishan Bacallian, and I wanted to let you know that he's from the Armenian Martyrs Church, and he is being transferred to Beirut next month. So, he's been with us here for nine years, and he's been a great addition to our community. And I know you'll join me in wishing him well in his new calling over in Beirut, not an easy place to be, so I just want to pledge to know that.
Let's pray. Dear God, we are thankful to you, once again, for this opportunity to meet in this place to conduct the business of our township without fear for our safety, without the pains of hunger, without suffering from exposure to the elements. This evening, I pray for wisdom for our commissioners, for protection for our public employees in various branches of service, for our schools, our businesses, and homes, that we would enjoy a true sense of community where we look out for one another and choose to do what's best for all. As we look forward to the coming holidays of Hanukkah, and Christmas, and New Year's, and more, teach us to share the blessings we enjoy with the many in this area and in many other places throughout the world where people are cold and hungry and facing danger. We ask that a spirit of gratitude toward you and a spirit of cooperation toward each other would be clear in all we do. Oh Lord, may each of us help you bring joy to this world as we together work for peace on this earth. Amen.
Amen.
Deputy?
The Pledge of Allegiance. Considered by the United States of America, the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If anybody needs that, there's agenda's up front if anybody needs one. Okay, this evening, we have a few proclamations, and, okay, for the first proclamation, is Mr. Siegel, are you going to handle that? Mr. McCloskey going to assist you with that? And could I please ask that Dennis Gray from the School Board, along with Dr. Joseph Martin and Superintendent Maureen Roushi come up and... But wait a second, I'm sorry, wait a second. This is, this is back and forth. My apologies. I'm looking at two, two of them at once here. This is for Mr. Hollingsworth for the Senior Citizens Board? Thanks. Just wanted to let you know that we're human, too. There's Mr. Hollingsworth.
Tonight, we're here to honor and thank Harry Hollingsworth, who has served on the Senior Citizens Advisory Board for seventeen years, including eight years as President. When I first was elected, I think it was literally the first phone call I received was from Harry welcoming me, telling me about the Board, and asking to be reappointed. And I was thrilled to do it, and later learned just how vital Harry was to that Board, to the community, to his wife and family, and it's now with, you know, bittersweet emotions that we are offering a proclamation thanking you as you're stepping down to do other things. And I have Commissioner McCloskey here as well, and the Board of Commissioners has this proclamation. And I'll summarize it, that the Board of Commissioners, we take great pride in recognizing outstanding and notable residents of the township, and being conscientious in your role as President, making certain that you were in touch with officials at all levels of government at all times. I know that we invited a former Congressman who couldn't be here tonight to join us, who you were friends with.
And a caller.
And you handled everything as well as you could. You were devoted to assuring, in particular, that the voice of senior citizens in this township were always heard. And so, it's proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners that all of us extend a sincere thank you to you for your many years of service in Harford Township, your warmth, your dedication, and your devotion to the township and its senior citizens will always be remembered, proclaimed this twelfth day of December 2016 by the Township Board of Commissioners. And we congratulate you.
Thank you.
I'll just take a few minutes, all right?
Go ahead. Much time as you need.
My dad takes up all the time. I would like to thank individually all the Commissioners for all the support you have given the Senior Citizens Council. Whenever we had a question, or we invited somebody to come, even when we had a little party in the back room here, Commissioners showed up, so I appreciate that. Also, where's Larry at? I want to thank him, oh, there he is, and your staff.
Stand up, Larry. Oh, you are.
What do you call it? Karen is very good, Gloria, they've both been a big help with the seniors in giving things scheduled and things like that. So, I thank you all and wish you all a good holiday season and a good future at Harford Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry.
Harry, I just want to say personally, I admire you so much. You are such a dedicated person, not just to the community, but you have been such a dedicated person to your wife, to your vows, and it makes my heart feel so well that for so long that you've been a... Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, on the agenda, Alex Green, is he here this evening? Okay.
Al Green?
Al Green, we'll get him next month then.
Next month.
Okay. Now, Mr. Wexler, I would ask that the School Board, represented by Dennis Gray, President, by Dr. Joseph Martin, and also by Superintendent Maureen Roushi, please come forward for this proclamation for Ann Ackerman in memory of her appreciation.
Chris, I got a feeling that's Mr. Green that just walked in the door.
Uh, no.
No? Okay.
Two women. Two women walked in.
Mister?
I think so.
A pleasure to be here to present this. It's a sad pleasure, but an honor. I've known Ann, Ann was a neighbor of mine. She lived on Dermon Road, she was a good neighbor to many people, and a great wife to her husband, Joe, who was sick the last few years. There's two people in the room, I would say the definition, when I, when people talk about love, Ann Ackerman's one example that I use about how devoted she was to her beloved Joe, and Harry how devoted he was to his wife. The night that we carried Harry and his wife out in an ambulance, his only concern was hers, and when she was ill with her dementia, he took her everywhere, introduced her to everybody. It was just a pleasure to see, it's just a great definition of love. Two, two people of that generation to move their spouses. So, it's an honor for me, as a neighbor, friend, and as a Commissioner, to read this. This is in memory of Ann, who formerly a Ninth Ward resident for over thirty years, during which time Ann served in numerous community affairs, including the Haverford Township Civic Council and the Darby Creek Valley Association. She was the co-founder of Haverford Township Day and played a principal role in saving of the historical Grange estate. She at times also served as President. In her earlier years, Ann was a longtime teacher at Haverford Township Senior High School, where she taught history and served as the Department Chairman. She always was a teacher every time she talked to me as well. Ann was a wonderful friend and volunteer to Haverford Township. We are grateful for all her time and devotion. Ann, rest in peace, proclaimed this twelfth day of December 2016 by the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. And I'm hoping that we can find a nice honorable place either in the school, at the Grange, somewhere to hang this, to remind people of such devotion and the community service that she gave, both to students and to the community.
I don't know if Dennis wants to say anything. Dennis, do you want to say anything?
Dennis?
Would you like to say anything, or? Yep.
Mrs. Gilbert, as I remember her at the high school.
Absolutely.
Taught for over thirty years at Harford Department Chair. Unfortunately, I did not have her, but I have many friends who had her fond memory, wonderful, wonderful teacher. What I, probably what I would call the perfect employee, we have many of them, that's employees who not only work and give back to the students, but also live in our community and give back to our community in many ways. And the accomplishments just read in the kit, she's probably maybe the perfect employee that we've had in Harford. So, thank you very much for honoring her tonight, and we'll make sure the plaque gets in a special place either at the school or at the Grange.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, here we go.
Before I had any info, the School Board, I had a vice grip on my ear, it was Ann Ackerman, okay? Everybody who knows her knows that she thought that you could do something to advance the wonderful things she wanted to do, she would grab me. So, as soon as I landed, I had, she was with this Darby Creek Initiative with the city and somehow the Grange, but I could never tell what the agenda was. So, when I responded to Dennis about this event tonight, I said, "I've contacted about six different venues. This is an all-around good citizen."
Thanks, Jim.
I see, I take note to detail that our President of the School Board is wearing his crimson and gold tie.
The girls are taking me to dinner.
Harry!
The, excuse me, the Township was, it was honored the other day, we were given notification that the Township received a million dollars under the RCAP, the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, funding to go towards the Township building, the construction of the Township building and the police department, police station. We are so very, very happy to get that because now that helps with whatever, whether extras had to be done or what needs to be done. So, I would like to recognize that there were a lot of people involved in this, and I would like to recognize that Jamie Santoro, if he would please come up, and you were one of the people, your office was one of the offices that was very involved in pushing this forward, and if you'd like to come up and say a few words, the Board is very grateful for this.
I know you're going to acknowledge some other folks, but I'd like to acknowledge them first.
He's here.
I got to tell you, without the push, the constant push from Steve D'Amelio and Bill Wexler saying, "What can you go get us? We need your help from the state level." I would have done it anyway, but they made it that much easier for me to just go push the Governor's Office and everybody else. So, I want to thank you two gentlemen because it's important, and I know all the Commissioners do it, but I represent these two wards, and they have been a good advocate for your Township, so, thank you. Two other people, Larry Gentile and Lori Wittup, they have been unbelievable. Lori is a pit bull, and that is in the kindest way I can possibly say.
He didn't know that.
She is all on me, all the time. Where are we with the grant? Did we get it? Are we there? What's going to happen with this thing? Relax, Lori, it takes time, it takes time. I don't have time, I need it. And Larry was the same way. I was doing doors during my election, I see Larry up cutting your lawn, I believe. Hey, where are we with that grant? And I'm not kidding, every time, so, they remind me. When I ran the first time, I made a commitment that I would bring funds back to this district, I'd make, bring funds back to Haverford Township. So far, I've been able to keep that promise, I will continue to do so. I had very good conversations with the Governor's Office, we were able to get that million dollars done. We couldn't get the full three million, but you know what? We'll take a million at a time, and eventually it'll add up to three million. We were able to get the Township Line project done. That's going to happen this March, that's another million and a half dollars. If I have to estimate it, I'd say about six fifty of it's Haverford Township. Upper Darby just has a bigger stretch of Township Line Road, but that's another one. We got, I was able to help assist Dylan Leach and Greg Vitale by pushing the Governor's Office. I have a very good relationship with the Governor's Office, I'm very fortunate in that way. A good friend of mine is Deputy Chief of Staff, and we were able to push for your two other grants this year, which were the Streetscapes, I believe that's on Darby Road, and there was a watershed type of project that you're doing. And we were able to help have them call down to the CFA and, you know, push it, and then through the Speaker's Office, we were able to get that done. So, it's been a good year for Haverford Township. We've got to keep those good years coming because I know it's very helpful. I also want to say one other thing. Tim, pay attention. Tim lost his mother last month. I don't know if you were going to acknowledge that or not, but I'm going to. I know a lot of Tim's family, what an incredible woman Mrs. Denny was. She was a college graduate in nineteen forty, okay? That alone was amazing. Then went on to get a master's degree. I believe she got an honorary doctorate from Chestnut Hill College. She was the, what was it called? President of the Board of Education for the Archdiocese of Philadelphia Schools. This was an amazing woman. And a little side note, she also had nine lives. They had her in hospice multiple times, and she laughed at it, but this time, she finally was able to meet her maker this November. I think it was actually, as much as it was a sad moment, I think with their deep faith, it was a good moment for their families. So, Tim, you have an amazing family, your mother would be proud, so. Thank you for the time to speak, and we'll keep fighting for Haverford Township.
I'm sorry, Jamie, before we clap, there's, there is a, we just got a two million dollar grant for Westchester Pike, right, to, at the Blue Root?
The majority of that is marple, however, and that, what that's going to do is help at the interchange at the Blue Root. In fact, I just, one of your fellow colleagues just grabbed me and said, "I need to know more about that that's in my district or in my ward." I apologize, I'm so used to districts. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to, I'll talk to McGarrett's Office tomorrow, we're going to get all the details, and report back next month.
Okay.
But that will help Haverford Township.
Oh, yeah.
The dollars themselves are going in tomorrow.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Let me get this done first.
Mr. President, can I say something?
Chris, wait a minute, pastor, wait a minute, pastor. Before the pastor leaves, he's been a dedicated person for Haverford Township, let's wish him well and Godspeed, let's all stand up and get in our hand.
My understanding is, and in all fairness, we always want to recognize everybody that was involved, and from Senator Dylan Leach's office, can I please ask that Charles Berkowitz, please, please come up? With the double hi, hey.
Jazz hands, that's it. I'll make this very brief. It's a pleasure to be here and speak before the Board and everyone here. Senator Leach's office, in working effort with all the state representatives in the seventeenth district, we're always, you know, we're a phone call away, whether it's grants or any other state issues, but I know Senator Leach has been pushing for RCAPs across the district. It's always really exciting when we have success, and we'll continue to work for it as we move forward. And, you know, we're, again, we're a phone call away, you always can call our office, grants or any other issues, and we'll be there to help as best we can. Thanks so much.
Don't think we won't. Mr. D'Amelio, you had a...
Yeah, you know, I just want to say something about Representative Santoro. Jamie, I can't thank you enough. This man attends every one of my First Ward meetings at Manoa, and hears a lot of issues from our constituents, and is very accessible. I've heard from many different residents how accessible he is. He made a promise when he first ran, and I'm telling you, you can't ask for anything more from a state representative than for someone to fight for the constituents of Haverford Township. And I am so thankful that you are our representative. So, thank you, Jamie, for everything that you do for us. It means a lot, because I'm telling you, we never had that. We have it now with you.
Steve, I'd like to echo that, is, for the Ninth Ward, we're both the first and the Ninth Ward owner of Jamie's district, and it's been a pleasure. When we had the fatal accidents on Township Line, his office was on it the next morning. We were on the phone that afternoon, and he took action, him and Senator McGarrett. We've got immediate results, one point five seven million dollars to improve traffic on Township Line and improve the safety along Township Line on the edge of our Township, and we work well together with Upper Darby. So, you've got a constituent office right on Township Line, our residents are being served almost twenty-four seven by that great staff down there, so thank you very much.
Can I just say what Jamie said, the first day, well, Lori Hanum went up, I think he described her as a pit bull. I remember the first day she came here. Jamie, you were right. She's been that way ever since.
In the nicest way.
Of course.
All right. And again, thank you, Representative, for everything that you do for Haverford Township, and please convey to the Senator, thank you very much for everything that you guys, working together, can help the good people of this community. Okay? Thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything to say on this matter? And moving forward, proclamations are done. Mrs. Wittup, we have a construction manager update of the building?
Yeah, there are two Representatives, thank you again for your assistance with the grant. There are Representatives here from Reynolds Construction that will give the Board the monthly update. It's been a couple of months because we have been at work sessions, so we have a little bit of catch-up.
Thank you.
Oh, my God.
Good evening. My name's Ryan Brennan, I have a project manager, Reynolds Construction, project manager. I'll provide a brief update on the progress, go over costs.
Excuse me, one second.
Dave, would you do me a favor?
I already hired Kevin.
Okay, we just want to make that panel, I just want to make...
David, stay up. Kevin, stay up.
Might need Joe Martin. Might need Joe Martin, too.
Watch the fan.
There we go.
This is the reason we need a new one. No, not a new engineer. We don't need a new engineer.
Thank you, thank you very much. Sorry about the interruption.
So, just how many elected officials does it take to change a light bulb? I'll go over costs and then go over schedule, and then take any questions. We weren't here in November, since that time, the parking lot has completed by November second. Currently, right now, there still are some punch list items pending in there, and the contractors are working towards those, and still has some additional work to do in there, but it is a usable space. As far as the building goes, they're continuing on the footings and the foundation walls. They're roughly forty percent complete with that activity. They expect to wrap up the interior footings by the end of the week and allow the underground plumbing to commence as well as as they work through the rest of the foundation walls around the perimeter and continue on the bulk excavation. They also will complete work at the stormwater work that they're doing down there at the Access Drive. Regarding costs, currently right now, we're showing about a thirty-nine percent exposure on contingency in the report that I issued at the end of last week. Since that time, we've actually received another credit, so that's dropped down a little bit from that point. So, costs are probably right where you would expect them at this point in the project. You know, you're usually going to impact most of your costs as you're coming out of the ground, and then once you're out of the ground, the costs certainly will get less from that point as far as any change orders. We don't have any change order for approval at this meeting. We have some items that are showing under negotiation that we're working with the contractor to go back and forth, as we don't agree with some of their costs, and we're looking for some justification on that. As far as schedule, there's a schedule that was included in the report, that was the contractor's schedule that they've used with updates from all of the other prime contractors collectively. We took that schedule, we have the electronic file, and we produced our own schedule to determine why it was showing the negative days behind that it was showing. We found a couple quick logic mistakes that they made, so without changing any durations, without adjusting different activities, we reduced that back, the number of days behind. And then following some days meeting, with the real life of where we're at today, we believe that the first floor, where the police is going to occupy, we'll complete at the end of August, and the second floor will complete about six weeks after that, which is mid-October. And the entire project, we're thinking, will complete by middle of November, that's site work with, you know, once the police move out, that's demoing that building, and then there's a good bit of site work there. So, that'll be that work from the beginning of mid-October to mid-November. Are there any questions?
I do have a question. I'm sorry, you want to go first? Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I yield, go right ahead, please, Mr. McCloskey.
You said, before it was thirty-nine percent of the contingency fee, and there was a credit, and you said it's dropped a little bit, but what percentage is it at now?
Percentage on top of my, we just finalized it before I left, it was a twenty-three thousand dollar credit, so I think it came down to a hundred and eighty-nine thousand of exposure off of five-thirty.
What are the number of negative days?
Currently, what the contractor is showing is eighty-one negative days.
There were eighty-one days in the rear from where we should be.
So, when we adjusted it, you know, it's not that substantial, we're looking at about a month of days behind, with caveat that on the schedule, it showed the first floor much earlier than realistically it should have been completed, you know, and the police weren't going to really occupy that space anyway, so with the, the first floor is later, but as far as the overall building itself, it's about a month.
What is contributing to that?
Initially, there were some items that, you know, were some unforeseen items that occurred at the beginning of the project. Contractor has documented that, and they think that's why they are owed that additional eighty-one days. I've also documented to them how they've constructed the building in a different manner than they planned to, which has impacted the overall duration of days. So, I would say, when we sit down and you slice pie, you know, there were some items that were unforeseen that impacted some items. They haven't demonstrated on the critical path how many days that is, and that's a long process, and I don't think they'll go through it, and I don't know if they're, they have the ability to go through that and demonstrate that. But, to be fair, I would say, you know, some of that would be borne on the owner, and some of it would be borne on to the contractor on his progress.
When I go past there, usually in the afternoon, looks like they've already stopped for the day, like people have gone home. What is the work hours, what are the normal work hours?
I think it's different for each of the subs, I believe the site contractors working and getting done, working through lunch and getting done earlier, from my understanding. And the general contractor has their own forces doing the concrete work, and they are working from seven to three-thirty, which is your typical time that you would imagine contractors be working.
Till three-thirty. Okay, is that five days a week, or is that...
Yeah, they did, they did, one Saturday, the week after Thanksgiving, when we missed Yeah, they did, they did, um, one Saturday, the week after Thanksgiving when we missed two rain days. But that's the only Saturday they've worked today.
On average, how many, like, contractors are working there per day?
I would say...
How many tradesmen?
Yeah, how many? Yep.
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Fifteen, okay.
We've sent them correspondence requesting an additional crew and additional forces and we have not received anything back. We're on record sending it all back to them, but they have not responded and demonstrated why they do not need to.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is anybody else?
Yeah, Chris, I, you, basically, you had said there were 81 days behind. I had heard they're three months behind, so that would be 90 days. The baseball fields, basically, it was just going to be this year that we couldn't use the one field, but now you're saying you're not going to be done until November of next year. So, are you telling me that the fields next year will not be playable also?
Yeah, they won't be done, the building itself, until probably the middle of October. So, that fence that's there for the excavation and the benching back for the construction will still remain until that time.
And then, there was a line that you put in across the field from down in the corner all the way up to basically behind the stadium. And, yeah, and basically, we went over it, Chris and I, and the whole field seems to be out of whack from that line. It's not smoothed out or anything like that.
Okay, this is the first I'm hearing of it. I mean, I've seen it.
I think it was seeded and smoothed when they first did it. It might have settled with rain, but they didn't.
Well, I'll tell you, if they had to play on that field tomorrow, they couldn't play on it. I mean, it's, just take a look at it and you can, not walking it, just looking at it, you can see how it's that way. And then, second, and then another thing that Chris had just mentioned to you, last Friday, I was told by one of our employees who's in management that you had two people working down on the project down there. Two.
What day was that?
Last Friday.
Could be. I know we had some rain days. We have rain days on three of the days. I think the last week, there was rain days and there was actually nobody working.
Yeah, but if you're 81 days behind, you know, would you only have two people working?
I wouldn't, no.
Well, somebody in the organization here is really messing up bad.
We're the, we're the construction managers and then the prime contractor to get the jobs. So, all we have the ability to do is, and which we have done, is note to them that their manpower is behind and our next process right now is meeting with their owner and then contacting their bond and...
Who cracks the whip?
We continue to document.
Who cracks? Who's, who can we have here at the next meeting that we can point the finger to and says, who pushes? Who makes the...
We could bring, we could request that the general contractor show up. They control the bulk of the work and it's, at this point, it's really all of their work.
Do you, do you tend to get together with them and talk over these issues? Are there monthly meetings, weekly meetings?
There's weekly meetings.
There's weekly meetings. This, this is unbelievable. I mean, you're building a township building, a township building, and you're that far behind. It's just, to me, it's just...
Well, isn't part of the problem the fact that you're not allowed to have one contractor and have all the subs report through that one contractor under state law?
Under state law, it has to be bid under multiple prime contractors.
That's why, that's a big problem. And that's one of the reasons, would you agree?
Yeah, I think, I think the...
You don't have one, you don't have...
The Sherman Act in Pennsylvania, I think, does need to be changed.
Revised. That's why you have, if you had one contractor reporting, all the subs reporting directed to one contractor and accountable to one contractor, you wouldn't have this problem. So, it's a state law.
But to have two people working...
No, but I'm saying...
That is just amazing.
But when we put the project out and they looked at the project, they said, this can be done at a certain time and we understand weather and ever, all those factors play into that, but, I mean, to say you're three months behind right now is not good at all. I mean, it's...
Not.
Not to the contractor.
So, we really need these people to come to the next meeting.
As Chris said, can they come here? Can you get them here?
We can absolutely bring them here.
One more question. What happened with that Pico issue? Remember there was that problem with Pico last, was it last month? They didn't know where the line was and they had to...
Well, what was the gas company?
Was it gas?
And all.
Yeah, it was gas. What happened with that? Did that continue to delay it or, do you know, Lori?
I think you're talking about, the thing that we talked about was the gas main extension.
That was a change order.
And that actually wasn't a change order. It was approval to get, to pay Pico to extend the mains so that we would have the adequate pressure for the, for the new building. So, that actually wasn't something that the contractor was doing. There was another incident where there was the service, the gas service to the stadium hadn't been identified on the plans.
Right, right.
It wasn't where we, where it was assumed it would be and they had to relocate the gas main. That was handled earlier, but the most frequent one and the, and the, and the big ticket item was the gas main extension with Pico.
I think, I think they need to come here.
Is everybody satisfied? Any other questions?
It's also good to note that Mrs. Woodup has Mr. Burns Department involved in the meetings now. And so, depending on the next, next month's report, Mr. Burns' office can also give us, give this board some recommendations and I would suggest we discuss that in executive session next month.
Well, thank God for Lori because I know you've been on top of a lot of this, Lori. Thank you.
Pit bull.
Pit bull again.
I do think we need to get them in here.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we are item number four. We have the Business Development Committee with a presentation with HPED.
On behalf of HPED, I want to thank you guys for allowing us to speak tonight and for your support in 2016. No doubt, we're witnessing a change in the look and feel of our community.
Okay, this is, I'm sorry. I apologize. Mrs. Angel is here this evening as not only just a part of the HPED, but also as the township under the Business Development Committee. Right?
Can you guys hear me? Is this working or should I take this off?
Hang it up. Ask... Yes, you're good. The sound person says.
So, no doubt, we're witnessing a change in the look and feel of our community. We can see it all around the township. People within and outside the township are talking about the transformation. It's easy to forget what Haverford Township looked like 10 years ago and how far we've come. This presentation will celebrate the progress in our community over the past decade and our plans for a bright future. Mary Gentili, our Township Manager, has embraced the mission of beautifying our township with support from the Board of Commissioners. The transformation of our street skates during his tenure has been remarkable. We want to thank him and all of you for the work that's been done. A great deal of beautification work has also been done by HPED and other civic groups. This has been and will continue to be a partnership.
I would show you some examples of these changes and some before and after photos. While, of course, we have more work to do, I am very proud of our accomplishments so One of the first major beautification efforts was the Lannock Crossing Park Project completed in 2007. The project was a partnership between Haverford Township, the Civic Association, I'm sorry, the Lannock Civic Association, the Historical Society and the Boy Scouts. Together, we turned a blighted property that was slated to be a used car lot and turned it into a gateway park that celebrates our history and makes a statement for those entering the township. A few years later, the blacktop in front of Lannock Municipal Lot was removed by the township and a new garden was installed by the Lannock Civic Association. Last year, we rebuilt the rear wall, which had consisted of a pile of crumbling asphalt. We painted the guardrail, added planters and put in a welcome sign. The Brookline Parking Lot was first to be renovated. A new sign and consolidated meters were installed. Planters and new trees were added this year. Township received a HUD grant for the Brookline Business District. You can see on the left what the sidewalks looked like before and on the right, the new sidewalks with brick strip along the curb. We installed new streetlights and hanging baskets. The overall impression of the district has improved significantly, as you can see, and those of you who have been down to the lot or in Brookline, walk through on there. We also received a HUD grant to renovate the business, the Manoa Business District. We've begun by resurfacing the parking lot and adding new parking meters. We installed new sidewalks and streetlights. This summer, the HPED added a new garden in front of the municipal lot with township funds and volunteer labor. The new gardens, the new gardens flanking the bus shelter were also installed. These planters in Manoa were installed in October with a combination of township funds, contribution from businesses in the district and volunteer labor. In Oakmont, the new parking lot includes, included new signage, landscaping and consolidated meter system. Tree tenders planted trees at the back corners and volunteers planted a rain garden this year.
That's weird.
The township used a rebate from the conversion of streetlights from conventional lighting to LED to buy the new lights in Oakmont. The Haverford Township Civic Council used proceeds from the Haverford Music Festival to grant HPED funds to put in new planters and bike racks in Oakmont. We received another HUD grant for the Canadeline Business District and installed new sidewalks and streetlights. The Lancaster Avenue Business District was completed a few years ago with new sidewalks and streetlights. In Edgewood, streetlights and hanging baskets were added first. Then, we installed seven planters in Edgewood this year with a grant from the Haverford Township Civic Council and donations from the businesses. Winter greenery has been added this week. Overall, the business district looks much nicer than it did just a few years ago. We still have a few business districts that need revitalization, but we have to address these over the next few years.
In addition to business districts, we've been trying to beautify other public spaces as well. We've been adding trees and gardens to our median strips on Darby Road, Westchester Pike and Hathaway Lane. More gardens on Darby. We added the clock and installed township banners. In addition to what the township and HPED have accomplished, we're lucky to have community groups that have gotten involved in beautification efforts. Haverford Green installed and maintains this year-round garden on Darby Road. Another example of a successful partnership is the tree tender program. With support from the township, we've planted close to 700 trees in the past seven years. We've seen numerous improvements at the Ardmore Junction Train Station. Jane Hall initiated the installation of the wrought iron fence in 2007. In 2011, tree tenders planted several trees. And this year, Haverford Township Rotary adopted the station. They've begun to install gardens there. Similar efforts are underway at the Penfield Station. Tree tenders have planted trees and volunteers from Penfield Civic have begun to clear out the overgrown brush and add a garden station.
There have been other notable improvements at the township over the past several years. The development of Haverford Reserve and the opening of the Community Recreation and Environmental Center in 2012 makes an impressive statement about the health of our community. In addition to the crack, Freedom Playground was an immense community effort which involved 2,000 volunteers. The Dog Park was initiated by and is maintained by volunteers.
We've been developing a network of public trails with the help from civic leaders and volunteers. Haverford Township Day, which was initiated by the Civic Council in 1994, has become a unifying event for our community, bringing thousands of visitors each year. Other cultural events in the township have also blossomed. From the Spring Fest in May, Heritage Festival in June, Haverford Music Festival in September and Township Day in October, there are so many ways for the community to connect. The past 10 years, the successful Oakmont Farmers Market and the Haverford Guild of Craftsman What was once an eyesore is now a jewel in one of our larger business districts. The Haverford YMCA now serves over 26,000 members and plays an important role in our community. We've seen a great deal of business growth over the last few years. The development of the Lannock Quarry, which brings hundreds of thousands of dollars of new tax money to the township each year is the most obvious addition, but there are other signs. We've been blessed with several excellent new restaurants over the past several years. Most recent additions are Langella West in Oakmont, Tuscany Cafe on Westchester Pike, McCann's Kitchen on Darby Road and Sam's Place on County Line Road. Kettle has recently expanded by offering dinner and they hosted a very successful HPED Wednesday Dining Club dinner last week. And of course, there's Brick and Brew. Other newer restaurants include Edgewood Cafe, The Crossfire, Havertown Grill, Pepper and Chineys and Saigon Harbor. Residents in Haverford Township are thrilled about these changes and people in neighboring towns are starting to take notice. This is a new Haverford Township and over the next few years, we're sure to see additional revitalization and growth. So, what is next for Haverford Township? Materials for the construction of four 50-foot-long planter beds in the concrete, concrete medians of Darby Road have been ordered and delivered. They will be constructed of landscaping block walls with black stone caps and they will be installed this winter by public works as weather permits. The township and the school district are working together on a project to include art students in painting the light boxes on Westchester Pike. I started working with business owners on Darby Road in Oakmont to create a plan for their business district, which would include new streetlights, trees and parking lot improvements over the next few years. Blackstone planters with an aged wood look have been ordered out of the 2016 budget. They're at the top there. We also ordered two benches that can be used near Septa bus stops. One will probably be used there on Darby Road in Oakmont, the other on Darby in Brookline or Lannock.
Despens received a PennDOT Motive Road Transportation Grant to address stormwater and economic development in the block of Darby Road near the library. This project will be completed this summer and will include streetlights, new sidewalks and curbs. The HPED plans to add planters to another business district this year, probably Lancaster Avenue and Brimmar.
That's next.
That's next.
Two times.
We are looking at ways to beautify the entrance to, to the township on the west, Chester Pike on the west side of town. The Rooker Club will add gardens at Ardmore Junction and the Penfield Civic Project at Penfield Station should be completed. The construction of the new municipal and township building should be completed by 2017.
November.
We're also excited about the renovation of the library.
The magnitude of these changes over the past 10 years is really impressive. As you can see, this is a new Haverford Township with a bright future. HPED will be working to tell this story and promote a positive image of Haverford Township through press releases, through our website and Facebook pages and a new Discover Haverford marketing campaign, which will focus on our strengths, deep roots, fresh thinking and bright future. The Discover Haverford website will promote Haverford Township to potential new businesses and to potential new residents. It also will be a clearinghouse of information for current residents with a calendar of events, searchable business directory. None of us can do this work alone. We'll need to work together, each contributing to the whole. For the township, that'll mean financial support and working with HPED to create a long-term vision and strategic plans. For HPED, that'll mean listening to businesses as we manage projects and create programs. For businesses, that may mean getting more involved with the community, organizing in their business district, maybe facade improvements or keeping their sidewalks swept and weeded. For residents, it may mean joining a committee, helping out at a planning day or making an effort to shop local. It's clear that beautification and economic vitality are intertwined. Great businesses take pride in their appearance. While the efforts of the township, HPED and other civic groups are commendable, it is critical that individual businesses and property owners follow suit and beautify their own Finally, this is a photo that illustrates the layers of cooperation and partnership that this work requires in order to be successful. And it speaks to the kind of community that we are. First, the township added streetlights and hanging baskets in Edgewood. In 2016... In 2016, the Civic Council gave HPD a grant with proceeds from the Music Festival to purchase those planters. Haverford Music Festival is itself a result of a great deal of volunteer labor, support from the presenting sponsor giant, hundreds of smaller sponsors and vendors, assistance from the township, especially the police department, and donations by attendees. Then in June, Public Works picked up those 10 planters, which were 500 pounds each, and placed them for me in those locations in Edgewood. I successfully solicited donations for businesses in the district for the purchase of plants. Then we planted the planters with the help of several volunteers. In August, the Township Board of Commissioners voted to support HPD in managing several beautification efforts as well as hiring a business development manager. With these funds, the coordination and management of projects, purchases, and volunteers for these kinds of projects is ensured. As part of HPD's holiday decorating contest, Edgewood Cafe decorated their facade and window. And last week, I've refreshed those planters with winter greens. Finally, a couple of people have asked me about painting those planters, and I was hesitant to do so because I was worried about chipping paint and constant maintenance. But I did want to consider staining them. There is a concrete stain that can be used. So when we had our annual meeting in November, I approached Kevin Nolan and said, "What do you think about this idea? Is this a good product, and do you think that I can do this with volunteers?" And he said, "Nolan Payne will take care of it. We will do it." So I feel like that just shows all of the different ways that people can get involved just in one little area. So I want to thank you, the Township Administration, and to the board. For HPD, Civic Council, and all the volunteers who have helped make these changes happen in our community, thank you for your work, your vision, your financial support, for getting your hands dirty when necessary. Give yourself a round of applause.
Thank you very much. And first, I just want to thank the Board of Commissioners for their support of the Economic Development Committee, through the Economic Development Committee in supporting HPD, and all of you who are here from the HPD. Thank you very much, and all the volunteers. Really do appreciate what everybody's doing, and you can see the difference 10 years has made with the township and the commissioners. As I was telling Gene earlier, it does take, as Gene said, it does take a village. The first public-private partnership that we did, which was the Derby and Lanark Crossing Park, that was businesses donating, that was the township working together with the Lanark Civic Association, the Historical Society, everybody coming together. So it really is looking good out there. So, thank you.
Just like everyone to know that Chair of that Board of the Economic Development is Mr. Lewis, and then we have Vice Chair, Mr. Holmes, and also on our committee, Mr. Aliva and Mr. Wexler. So, gentlemen, thank you very much, and we also now have Gene Angel at our availability. And thank you very much to HPD. We have a lot of H committees around here, don't we? Thank you very, very much.
H-Town, what do you expect?
H-Town, there we go. Happy Pride. Does anybody else have anything else for the Board? Number five on the agenda is Citizens Forum. No one has signed up tonight to speak, so I will ask anybody who wishes to speak that we will go, we will just be for agenda items only, and I will ask this side of the room, first row, second row, third row. No one's in the last row. On this side of the room, first, second, third, fourth. I'm missing anybody, okay? There being none, we will move forward.
Chris, I think we have some young ladies over here from Archbishop Carroll. Does any of them want to present why you're here tonight or say anything? What's your purpose of being here? Observation of the Commissioners' meetings?
We're here for our golf class.
Because I have to be here.
Extra credit. Always a good motivation.
So they're here because they have to be.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
They were here in October, and they opted to come back instead of go to some other township, and so we should take some pride in that.
They were amazed at the last meeting.
Well, thank you for coming, ladies.
The one they came to was a good one.
Okay. Moving forward on item number six is the Budget Hearing and Adoption. There are several of them, so Mr. Holmes is the Finance Committee. Would you please move forward on that?
Happy to. Thank you, Mr. President. Let me find my agenda. Mr. President, first and foremost, I move that we accept any changes to the 2017 preliminary budget. There are no changes to the 2017 preliminary budget as far as I am informed as of several minutes ago, so unless anything has changed, and obviously nothing has come up in the public comment section, so unless I hear anything from any members of the Board, I would ask that we readopt our 2017 preliminary budget as a final budget.
Okay, so now the motion right now is to accept any changes to the 2017 preliminary budget.
Right.
There aren't any as of this time?
Since we have none, I think I withdraw my motion to accept any preliminary, any changes.
Okay, that sounds good.
And does the person who seconded agree to the withdrawal?
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I now change my motion to now readopt the 2017 preliminary budget as our final budget for 2017.
Very good.
Accept that as well.
Okay, Mr. Wexler, thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt this final reading of Ordinance P-24, 2016, authorizing the imposition of our annual sewer rate in the amount of $4.70 per thousand gallons of water consumed.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Siegel.
Mr. President, that does not reflect any change from the previous rate, and it was adopted at the last meeting, and I recommend that we adopt this reading.
Discussion? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Ordinance Number 2801-2016, establishing the annual trash fee of $197.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Siegel.
Mr. President, this is a, this reflects a $2 increase, a $3 increase to the annual trash fee. It was $194 last year. It is worth noting, it still approximates about 80%, maybe slightly less than that of what the actual cost to the township is of our trash collection, so reflects a, basically a compromise between having a flat fee that, you know, covers all of Public Works versus having, you know, having a part of our regular revenues, tax revenues that we use for the purpose of the ordinance. It is a trash fee that is significantly lower than the trash fee of our neighboring townships around us, and quite a few of them have gone to one trash pickup a week, so remains an extraordinary bargain, and I do recommend that we adopt this second, final reading.
Discussion? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio is not in the building. Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Ordinance Number 2801-2016, which fixes the tax rate for the year of 2017 at 7.993 mils.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Aliva.
Mr. President, this is an ordinance that is only read once. That qualifies as a first and final reading. This rate is set after the determination of the preliminary budget, any consideration of any changes, and then is only final tonight. This number reflects, I hope I get this number correct, but approximately a 2.67% increase in the, in our taxes from last year, considering, as we went through the budget last time, the number of things that drive that, drive that increase are things that we certainly are aware of and things that we've needed to do in this township, not limited to, but certainly including the new township building that we just discussed several minutes ago. I recommend that we adopt the ordinance. In fact, frankly, it is necessary for us to actually enact the budget that we just adopted several moments ago. So, it is my recommendation that we adopt Ordinance 2801.
Okay, and thank you, Mrs. Cuthbertson. Any discussion? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, Mr. Holmes, your final budget act of this evening.
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. President, once again, we have another ordinance, Ordinance 2802, 2016, which is an ordinance that need only be read once to be effective. It appropriates funds established to be required for specific purposes of financing the municipal government for the year 2017, right?
Yeah, there's a type.
Including all taxes, fees, service charges, and other revenue sources provided within all funds.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Aliva.
Mr. President, this is a ministerial act, basically allows us ultimately to effectuate our budget, the votes we just enacted, in order for us to be able to establish, appropriate, do everything necessary with the money for us to run the township. I recommend that this ordinance be adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Discussion? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Excuse me, yes. Thank you very much, and that will end the budget portion of the Commissioners' meeting. Now we will move.
Mr. President, if I could just note for the record, if I could recognize the efforts of Amy Cuthbertson and our township manager, this, I'm coming to the end of my 11th year on this board. I have to say this was the smoothest, least violent, and frankly, I think one of the most efficient budget seasons we ever had. I think our township in the last 10 years, as we saw this theme in the HPD presentation just a moment ago, really reflects the professionalism, the increased professionalism, the extraordinary efforts of just a crackerjack township staff that we have. And I, all I do up here is read things off a prompter and get you folks to vote for it, but these folks do the hard work, and I do think they deserve a round of applause for it, if I may. So, it's all I have on the budget, Mr. President.
Anybody else like to contribute?
Well, I just want to say that, I tell you what, anytime you call Amy's office, she has an answer for you. I mean, it's so refreshing than it was probably when I first started, Larry. You didn't get any answers. You didn't know.
About 10 years ago.
But you got more questions.
A lot of questions.
I agree with you, Steve.
When you call Amy, it's like, yeah, hold on, let me get it for you. It's like, wow. Amazing.
Different world.
Way different. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Cuthbertson. Thank you very much for all you do. Larry, thank you very much.
Larry gets enough accolades. Don't give him that.
You guys stink me. Well, take me down.
You guys are going to pay contract time, I tell you.
We're now moving on to the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Item number seven is the Township Auditor Update.
Good evening. I have reviewed the disbursements for the period commencing November 15 and ending December 12. I raised certain questions. I asked for substantiation of certain of those disbursements. All the information and substantiation was provided to my satisfaction. Therefore, in my opinion, there were no irregularities for the period in question. Thank you.
Item number eight, approval of the minutes. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio.
And before I do that, I just want to say something about Gary. Ever since he's been elected, he's been here every meeting. I don't think he's missed one, maybe except for family issues. So I appreciate everything that you do for the township as well. Regular meeting of the Board of, regular meeting minutes of November 14, 2016, and preliminary budget meeting minutes of November 21, 2016. Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 14, 2016, and the preliminary budget meeting minutes of November 21, 2016.
Second. Who had that, Mr. Siegel or Mr. McCluskey?
I did.
Mr. Siegel, okay. Discussion? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, item number nine, approval of the warrants. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, I move, I move that we approve warrant number 12 of 2016 totaling $7,48,381.98, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for November 17, 2016, the amount of $619,781.21. The general sewer fund payroll for December 1, 2016, the amount of $954,079.42. The general fund disbursements, number 12 of 2016, in the amount of $4,173,723.26. Sewer fund disbursements, number 12 of 2016, in the amount of $230,071.33. Community development block grant fund disbursement, number 12 of 2016, in the amount of $74,938.64. Home grant fund, number 12 of 2016, in the amount of $13,212.00. Capital projects fund disbursement, number 12, in the amount of $528,705.88. And two, I'm sorry, and a scheduled debt service payment of the Series 2010 General Obligation Bonds due 12/1/16 in the amount of $445,131.25. And a credit card statement ending November 27, 2016, in the amount of $8,738.99.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Aliva.
Mr. President, our township auditor has been through these warrants. Any questions that have come up in his examination have been raised to our Township Finance Director, and those questions have been answered to his satisfaction. He has reported to us that these warrants should be approved. It's my recommendation that we do the same.
Discussion? There being none, please take the roll.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, item number 10, Mr. Aliva.
Yeah, Ordinance Number P-26, 2016. Motion to adopt the second reading of Ordinance Number P-26, 2016, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. To establish parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times on the east side of Lanark Avenue from Mifflin Avenue to a .30 feet north, the east side of Lanark Avenue from West Park Road to a .30 feet north.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lewis.
This is to point out that people, you know, it's tight parking there. People are parking on the curbs, and then we can't get fire equipment around the corners. It's too tight down there, so we want to establish this to keep our residents safe.
Anything further? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
This is ordinance number P-27-2016, amending Chapter 136 Police Services. This is the first reading. Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-27-2016, amending Chapter 136 Police Services.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Aliva.
Yeah, can we explain what this is?
Deputy Chief, you want to come up, please?
Work session.
What this ordinance is doing is updating it to modern times. The original ordinance was written, I believe, in 1960. So, it was cleaning up language in there and also bringing up what now is in place for anyone that wants to hire an officer on an outside detail. So, that's basically just cleaning up the language and making it a more modern time ordinance.
Thank you.
Biggest change that I noticed is policemen to police officers in all the language.
Like, in those days, you used to be looking for a policeman or workman. All right, do you men have anything else you want to bring up?
Yeah, we men do not have any, do we, Bill?
A nice shot.
Okay. There being none, please take the roll.
Right. It's an appropriate update for 2016.
Absolutely.
Probably should have happened 30 years ago. It was an appropriate update in 1998.
Please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes. Item number 12, Commissioner McGarrity?
Yes. Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P-28-2016 authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. On Harvard Road on both eastbound and westbound directions where it intersects with the Pennsy Trail.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Wexler. There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio? He stepped out. Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes. Item number 13 is resolution. Mr. Siegel, do you want to take a reading of this?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2031-2016 approving the 2017 meeting dates for the Commissioners, Boards, and Commissions.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. McGarrity. Discussion? Now, this was at the, get rid of him.
Do you just want to clarify? I know when we were doing our interviews for all the committees, there was some communication regarding whether that official vote meeting in terms of who we were going to appoint to the various committees was whether it was January 2nd or January 3rd. And I think the meeting is January 3rd because the holiday will be set on the 2nd.
Tuesday, the 3rd, right?
Tuesday, the 3rd. So, Tuesday, the 3rd, will be the day where we vote on who is placed on the committee, reorganization of this board, and then all the committees. So, just in a public setting to state that as well.
Now, I also want to point out here, and it says 7:30 PM. Is that correct?
Where's that?
Seven, I have down here, Tuesday, January 3rd, 2017, reorganization, 7:30 PM.
Just that one meeting.
Yeah, I just want to verify that everybody has that understanding?
Is that right? Okay. And then the rest are 7?
Correct.
And the rest of the work session and the regular meetings are at 7 o'clock PM. For most of the work sessions, if there is one, it would be on the first Monday of the month, with the exception of April 3rd.
7:30, yeah.
Nope, that is, Mr. Siegel, that's Passover, correct?
In April, yes.
In April, so it is changed to April 3rd?
Correct.
The rest, self-explanatory there. Regular sessions, they all remain the same, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, in the change of the calendar, I see here for Rashashana and Yom Kippur, there are no meetings in the township that will affect the calendar itself, correct?
Correct.
So, that, okay, so the zoning hearing board will be notified?
Well, I wouldn't say that. I would say that-
And the health advisory board.
There should, with regard to those holidays, there should be no meetings on the evening of September 20th, all day September 21st and September 22nd, which is a Friday. I don't think Yom Kippur is going to be relevant because it's on a Friday night and Saturday, the 29th and 30th. And those would be really the only days, those and Passover.
All right, and Passover would affect the Health Advisory Board on that Tuesday?
I didn't look at the specific awards.
What date's that one, Chris?
Tuesday, April 11th.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay. So, everyone has a clear understanding. Those will be the changes, and in front of you should be the, all the dates and calendar. Any further discussion? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio still stepped out. Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes. Item number 14 is a resolution in the 7th Ward.
Resolution number 2032-2016 Lot Lane Consolidation Plan for Oxford Road. Motion to adopt Resolution number 2032-2016 approving the lot consolidation plan for Stacy and Larry Daz, Oxford Road, Haverford Township, Delaware County, known as DC Folio. Numbers 22-07, 01145-00, 22-07-01, 146-00, has been submitted to distinguish a common lot between two existing parcels located in the southwest corner of Oxford Road and Penbrook Road to create one lot containing 9,375 square feet. The property is owned R4 residential and located in the 7th Ward. The ascertained plans were prepared by Yerkes Association in Westchester, Pennsylvania, dated July 28, 2015, subject to compliance with the Planning Commission recommendations.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Aliva. Discussion? There being none, take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes. Number 15 is a 5th Ward.
I'll be a yes, too, there, Larry.
Did I miss you? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Wexler?
Yes, thanks. Motion to adopt Resolution number 2033-2016 authorizing the Chief of Police, John Viola, to file an application with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for a pedestrian traffic signal at College Avenue and East Railroad Avenue.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. D'Amelio. Discussion?
Andy, is that going to be one that's like user activated, you hit the button and it goes off? Laura, do you want to just touch on it? It's a pedestrian crosswalk across College Avenue which will access the existing crosswalk and stairs to Haverford College. So, it was a safety concern, and I think the college, to their credit, has stepped up and is spending a fair amount of money to make a significant improvement.
Now, Haverford College approached us in response to some of their staff and students' requests to have access across College Avenue at Railroad Avenue. There is a crosswalk a half a block away, but there are no access aisles to get to it. This proposal also creates a lane, a pedestrian lane, in addition to handicapped access and a pedestrian triggered signal. So, you would have to, you know, activate the crossing signal.
Good. It's great. Thanks to Haverford College for picking up the bill.
Yeah.
Precarious area.
It is.
Any further discussion? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes. Item number 16, this is the purchase of fire apparatus. Mr. Wexler?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the township manager to purchase the following apparatus for the Oakmont Fire Company. One, 2017 E1 Cyclone. Two, HP 100 aerial, 100-foot aerial from the First Choice Fire Apparatus, Hanover, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $998,776. And one, 2017 E1 Typhoon XL Pumper, in the amount of $499,959. And for the Manoa Fire Company, one, 2017 E1 Typhoon HXL Pumper, in the amount of $499,959, also from the First Choice Apparatus, Hanover, Pennsylvania.
Second?
This, I'd like to remind, this has been budgeted for the last two years.
And Mr. McGarrity?
Under our equipment replacement cycle. Some of these trucks are a little bit overdue for aging equipment for our volunteer fire companies. I think it's a great thing, and I think, thank you to Mr. Gentile for actually finally getting this to the budget after a couple of years of pushing it off for other purchases that we had to make. And I think a couple of representatives, the chiefs of the two fire companies are here, and I think they're probably very happy to see this finally come to fruition after a two- to three-year wait.
I don't see any smiling over there. Should be some smiling.
I'd like to recognize that in the audience tonight.
That is the chief smiling. That's the way he smiles.
We have Chief Haddon from Oakmont and Chief Mike Norman from Manoa Fire Company.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And Chief Officer William McGuire.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
Don't smile until after the vote.
We appreciate what you do for us, too. Thank you.
Fellas, don't smile until after the vote.
Any further discussion?
Just Mr. Chairman, for full disclosure, I'm a member of the Manoa Fire Company, one of the Board of Directors.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Hold on one second. Mr. Secretary, please take the roll.
He didn't take the roll yet.
Okay.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
You might want to abstain from that vote if you're on the Board of Directors.
Okay.
I'm just a volunteer fireman, so I think I'm okay.
Yeah, you're not on. I will abstain. Sorry, chief.
Well, he's abstaining because he's with Manoa and they're getting the funds.
Right.
Okay. But if you're with another board, that doesn't matter.
Correct.
Just because he mentioned that he's on the Board of Directors at Manoa and they're-
What if you're on the board with Lanark?
Ah, you're fine.
Okay.
No, okay, then what if you are, you run with that fire company and you're a commissioner?
I wouldn't mind as a volunteer. No, I don't think that's a problem. I think being on the Board of Directors is really where the problem comes. Not even that it's a problem, it's just an appearance of-
That's why I brought it up. I wanted to make sure everything was okay.
Good man, Steve.
I apologize for-
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for protecting and serving the community.
I do have to ask, we went to a big, you know, we went to a big 100-year anniversary last year for Brookline. I saw fire trucks that Ben Franklin himself, obviously, you know, rode on 200 years ago. So, what do you guys do with the old equipment, other than have it in parades?
They'll be advertised for sale. The money from the sale goes into the township general fund.
Great. Thanks.
For those at home that may not have heard that, the chief, Norman, said that it will be advertised for sale, and then the funds, if it's a township vehicle, will go back to the township. If it is a company vehicle, it will go back to the company then. Okay. Excuse me. All right, thank you very much. Moving on, item number 17 is a discussion for invisible fences.
That's just bizarre. Invisible, how are we discussing?
Well, it was, it was a-
Mr. Siegel?
I'll explain at this point. I think it's-
Just like thinking about fences? Is that what this is?
No, go ahead.
Mr. Siegel?
Now, well, yes, this was the issue that I mentioned last month that I thought was going to be discussed, that what I thought was going to be in, you know, a work session that we didn't have. We don't have a draft ordinance-
That's why we're going to have it here tonight.
Well, it's hard because we actually don't have the ordinance, but the issue, and I'll just raise it, I've received numerous complaints from residents about homes that have the invisible fences for dogs, where the situation is you're walking down the street and the dog approaches you, you know, and they don't know there's an invisible fence, and people you, you know, and they don't know there's an invisible fence, and people are fearful because they come right to the property line. Ms. Hanlon Woodup and I have worked, you know, to draft an ordinance that would address that, which basically, we'll have it for next month now, that would propose that there should be a sign on any property that has invisible fencing, and that there would be a setback of a few feet from the sidewalk line so that there's a safe area for people who are traversing on the sidewalks. I've had this complaint off and on since I became a commissioner, and I've seen it myself where you have a large dog, and that's been the issue. Other communities have similar ordinances. Basically, it requires the owner to post a sign that says "I have it" with a minor setback from the sidewalk. But we don't have, we have, we have a draft, we just don't have it in the agenda tonight. So we'll, I figured we would talk about it more next month at this point.
And there is a work session next month.
There isn't?
No. Well, we'll have it in the, then we can put it in. We don't have to, I don't see why we have to have it.
Do other municipalities require people that have invisible fencing to put up signs that say "We have invisible fencing"?
Some do. Yeah, I researched it.
Who around us?
I don't remember offhand, but some do.
Would it be better to have the invisible fence setback from the sidewalk, maybe an additional yard or two?
Well, that's the idea.
Yeah, is it? I'm sorry?
Yeah, that was, I think the draft we had was like five feet, yeah, and there still should be a sign so that people walking by would know that the dog is...
I would think if you set it back, you might be able to do that in lieu of a sign because the sign in the front yard is not...
I tell you, I have concerns about the front yard setbacks. I mean, the front yard invisible fences. A lot of people walk their dogs and, you know, you come by, the dog starts charging because it sees another dog.
Yeah.
It's still scary whether or not the visible fence is there or not. If it's in the front yard, it's a little scary. Most people in their yards have it fenced in, so you don't see it as much. The front yards, we don't really allow fences around, and it's a little scary to have a dog charge and then stopping, but...
That's, that's the genesis.
The whole point of invisible fencing in the first place...
Some do. I'd have to look. I had done research on it. I had looked at a variety of ordinances, and then Ms. Hanlon Woodup drafted it, or your department.
I mean, I think something that we have to consider in all this is that a property owner who decides to get an invisible fence might not, part of their reasoning for getting an invisible fence is because they don't want something in their yard as visual, so...
And it like scares people.
And then forcing them to put up a sign, sort of as contrary to the concept of visible fences. So I honestly haven't given this enough thought to come to my own conclusions about it, but I'm just raising that as an issue that, you know, the property owners who have expended money for an invisible fence, you know, would probably have some concerns if we then were placing some sort of requirement of a sign. Just something to consider.
When will we talk about this? In February?
I don't know. Well, there's no work session in January because we have our reorganization. So...
Well, Mr. Wexler, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if, I've looked into this. I have a dog, as Steve does, I'm sure. If you, if you get a reputable vendor to put it in, they have guidelines that have setbacks in there that are more than adequate for what they're... So if you look at a contractor do that, where I think the danger is there are now some do-it-yourself type of models that you can actually lay in. So I think having some guidelines is there. If you have a reputable contractor, they have standards that they meet, and most of them put up a sign because they want the advertising as well. It's a small sign protected by, so...
But it's not standard, and there's no requirement. There's one within a block of my house, you walk past it and the dog, the dog is larger than we, any of us.
Probably a do-it-yourself.
And scares the you-know-what out of a...
Yeah, a huge dog comes charging at you, a huge pit bull comes charging at you, are you gonna feel better because you look down and see, first of all, are you gonna look for a sign that says invisible fence? Or are you gonna jump into traffic? I mean, I...
I'm gonna jump in traffic.
I mean, our town, I mean, look, we have a duty. Anybody who owns a dog has a duty to protect their neighbor, I mean, to confine the dog. One of the things that's, that, you know, that, one of the products that's developed over the years is the invisible fencing, and part of its appeal is exactly that. Now, some people have security systems in their property, and they put right in the front yard, protected by whoever, ADT or Smith &amp; Wesson, or whatever the jokes are about how they're protected. And other people have huge protection systems and have no sign because they have no interest in putting a sign in the lawn about that. So I, I, I would be curious about any challenges that have been mounted to these kinds of things because...
But there is...
I'm not so sure he's talking about really, I mean, I know he wants a sign, Dan, I don't wanna speak for you, but you're also concerned about the, how far back.
Yeah.
Well, that's absolutely a real issue, and I assume that that's, that should be, I mean, that, that should be regulated.
I think it should be more than five feet.
It should be manufacturer suggested, I assume, you know, in terms of the people that put these things in, and the proper procedure for putting these in. But, but anyway, I mean, go on with more of the details of it. I just am concerned.
But there's a significant difference between when there is a dog in a front yard and whether you have a sign that says you have a security system in your home, you know. Someone walking down your sidewalk is not trying to perform an illegal act of entering a property or a business, whereas someone walking down a sidewalk and seeing a dog charge at them can have, you know, a reasonable apprehension of fear from the animal, charging. I've seen it. I, you know, like I said, there's a dog less than a block from my house that is a regular issue, shall we say, because people are afraid of it. But that's a big difference between some, that and what you have in your house, because no one is walking by your house and coming in.
No, no, but it's also, but it does go to the homeowners, you know, whether or not they wanna put, I'm just concerned about whether or not we're gonna require, we require people to confine their dogs, to keep their dogs safe. Now, we're concerned that, that people get scared by a dog, that somebody is properly keeping, you know, keeping harnessed. It's just not obvious. And I just, I'd just be curious as to whether, I mean, I guess it's not, I'm not really worried about its unenforceability, as I'm just worried about where we draw the line and how we enforce it, frankly. I mean, if somebody, a dog comes charging at me, scares the living daylights out of me, I find out that it had an invisible fence, and I feel like I was, I was scared unnecessarily.
That's why you're all over.
And then I raise a, I, I call the police, and these people get a ticket for not having a, a sign that said, "Relax, this big, huge dog won't get you because my invisible fence is here." I'm gonna jump into traffic if a huge pit bull comes at me, whether it's an invisible fence sign or not. I just, I just don't know if this really cures the harm.
If they want you, they're gonna come pass that invisible fence.
You know what? I think, I think, having Dan look into it further, I think if it's set back properly, it may not surprise you as much as if it's closer to the sidewalk. So it may not, you may, you may hear the dog before you even get there.
But if I had a dog on a chain, and that chain was 22 feet long, and my, and the sidewalk was 22 feet, six inches from the end of that chain, so the best that dog was gonna do was like spits saliva at me, but it's gonna come at me as fast as it can. It's gonna scare the living daylights out of me. What do we do in that circumstance? Are we assaulting people because we're putting them in fear of the dog because they can't count the lengths on the chain on its way to me?
I don't see where it's the township, the onus is on the township to see if a person's gonna be, you know, not be frightened. I think the question is, or the request is, one of the things could be, could there be a sign so that people are aware? If they choose to look at it, they look at it. If they don't, they don't. Maybe the first time down the street, they won't see it, but the second time, they, they may, or...
All right, but we're acting. The only way to do this is to make this an enforceable law by having a penalty if you don't live by it. So it matters to us as to whether or not we're, the harm we're trying to cure is cured by the imposition we're putting on, which includes requiring people with invisible fences to put a sign in their front lawn, big enough that people are gonna see. And, you know, is that, is that going to cure any of the concern somebody has as a dog comes charging at them? If that's the principal concern.
I hear you and I agree with you, but I also think the chain issue...
And we are talking about property rights, which gets into real sticky situations.
I'm personally against the idea of forcing people to put signs in their, in their yard about an invisible fence. I think the solution is to have a setback from the curb that's, and Commissioner Wexler already talked about this, any reputable vendor is gonna have a setback requirement. I don't know what it is, but if it should be at least, you know, 10 feet or eight feet or whatever it might be, but to put a sign up, to me, to force people to put signs up, to me, doesn't seem to be an imposition on their, on their rights as property owners.
Right. Now, at the same time, we can all think that until the first story of somebody who literally jumps between two cars because they're afraid of a dog, and then we're gonna feel lousy about it. So I would be curious as to the real details of what other municipalities have done and whether these have been challenged. But I share your concerns, Commissioner Lewis.
I mean, the homeowner could...
Telling homeowners to have to put these things up after they are obeying the law.
Right.
Which is to contain their dog. And what, I mean, I've got, I've got a dog that looks like a cat in a dog suit, okay? It's not as big as this laptop. So I'm guessing, just by what we're concerned about, that that really wouldn't be covered, except even a, even a little dog could scare somebody.
I don't think we're talking about the dogs. We're talking about the fence.
Yeah.
No, no, but the point is that any dog that, that is confined by an invisible fence in the front yard, the concern is that their restraint is not obvious, and therefore the dog's jubilance in greeting somebody at the sidewalk may scare them.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think there's gonna be any language, I mean, I don't think there'll be any language as to size of the dog, it's just a dog.
There has to be, some municipalities may have put this in because of residents, and Dan, you can research this, residents that have walked up to a property, didn't see the sign and really did jump into traffic, or those that see a sign and say, oh, there could be a dog coming, and not being frightened and jumping into the street. Because, let's face it, if it's a big dog, and I don't know this dog you're talking about, Dan, but if it's that big, it's scary when it starts to charge at you.
Right, but we're not passing an ordinance just for big dogs. I mean, that's what we have to consider.
No, I know that, but I'm using the big dog analogy because really, you know, even little dogs will frighten you, but he was talking about a big dog.
I think it doesn't, doesn't a homeowner...
Need to do a little research and, and discuss it at the...
Well, Dan's gonna, Dan's gonna look into it.
Doesn't a home, Solicitor? Doesn't a homeowner face liability if such a dog were to come across? So wouldn't it be to the homeowner's benefit to put up a beware of dog sign or something?
Nope. It's not the background. Well, no, because I mean, if there's an incident... Like cases are tough, you know, I mean, whether, whether you know the dog is, has those types of propensities and, you know. So it's a...
So do they face liability, though?
Yeah, they could. But it's not easy.
Have you ridden in the street, got hit by a car? I don't know about that. That's a stretch. I mean, you never know, you know? It would be, it would be a...
It's actually Paul's graph.
It would be a case I would take.
But it's a famous case, but it's, it's all about foreseeability.
Right.
Yeah. I mean...
Any further discussion?
I think we just need to...
Okay, so then...
Three months without a work session.
It is, our understanding that this will appear in front of us next month? Or do you wish to go to February?
I don't know. We'll be, next month will be three months without a work session, so, you know...
We could just continue discussion next month and have the other...
Well, couldn't we, couldn't we look at, I mean, we could certainly circulate in the board any form of a regulation of any other township. There's no problem with us circulating something among ourselves and reading it.
No.
And maybe addressing it again in January.
Yeah, and we've had two, I mean, I've seen two drafts of potential ordinances, and I had given some language, so there's, there's a lot of different ways it can be done, you know.
Well, how about that could just get shared with all the board, everybody takes a look at it? I mean, it's, you know, it, you know, again, I think it's a function of, of, I think there are all sorts of reasonable accommodations that could be made to worry about people's property rights and at the same time address obvious very, real concerns of your constituents and others' constituents. You know, a sign the size of an election sign, you know what I mean? I think people would be like, oh, that's crazy. And a sign the size of a credit card isn't any use, so I'd be curious as to what they do impose, you know?
Yep. Okay.
All right. Just one more thing, and Dan, when you look into this, I would look into whether or not we should even have it in the front yard. Remember I said that earlier? I mean, I, I mean, I don't know. Just find out if...
Your concern is that not to have, not to have invisible fence in the front yard?
Not to let dogs in the front yard, or only to have dogs physically chained?
Look, I'm talking about a safety issue. I mean, it could be a kid that's walking by at night, and a dog comes charging, they don't know from, you know, electric fence or sign, you know, kids could be scared. I, I think it's a safety issue, and Dan, if he could look into that and see how many municipalities, if they are, limiting that, I mean, and putting them in their yard rather than in their front yard. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. I'm just concerned about safety. I agree with what you're saying. I mean, I don't know this dog, but if you, what it sounds like, if you're walking by.
Mm-hmm.
Is it out at night, too?
I don't usually walk in that area at night. I'm not out, I'm asleep.
Out at night, too? According to Gary.
It's after eight.
Okay. Very good.
And I love dogs, don't get me wrong, you know that.
Thank you, gentlemen. We're gonna move on to item number 18, and this is the continuation of Citizens Forum for Non-Agenda Items. So if anybody would like to come up and speak for three minutes, on this side of the room, first row, second row, third row. This side of the room, second row, third, fourth, there being none. Let us move into item number 19, New Business. Does anybody have new business?
Yes, I'd like to ask Lori, Lori, about the home at 516 Eagle and where we stand on that process.
Well, the Solicitor's Office is preparing the date restriction that we had discussed, and the township is contacting an auctioneer to do a public auction at the site of the And I don't have a date for the auction yet, but I'm, definitely will send a report to the board.
Thank you, Lori.
Ask a question also, where do we stand in terms of the house that's being rehabbed in Commissioner Holmes's ward? Can you give us an update on that?
You mean the residents who came on...
Chestnut Avenue.
Yeah. Yeah, where do we stand? Mr. Celia has been, has all the bids.
Okay.
To make the improvements, and again, we're waiting for the other attorneys to give us permission to do that, because working with Mr. Burns... We've had a couple of different letters going back and forth with, with people with potential interest in the house, so...
To buy the house?
No, to try and make sure that we have permission to get into the house, and if we don't get that permission, then we may have to go in, we may have to get court approval to go in there.
The step that we took, the first step we took was to inform every person that we were aware of that might have had an interest in the property, to let them know that the board had authorized the solicitor to do everything up to and including exercising eminent domain over the property, and letting them know that anything we were spending, we were going to be looking to recover from them, or recover from the sale of the property if we ultimately took it over and sent it. In the meanwhile, we've gotten bids for the roof, and we have ordered a lot of the stuff that's necessary, like the window replacements and things like that. But as we expected, sending out these letters to everybody who at some point or other had expressed interest in this property, you know, some kind of possessory interest or equitable interest in this property, have responded in some ways and others. Some people have disavowed it completely. One of the family members said, "I don't care about this house, I don't want anything to do with it, I have no rights to it, be done with me, don't, don't call me again." Others have, have maintained that they have some rights to maintain and kind of thwart the township's efforts. We will proceed along those lines, but to the extent that we can do this cooperatively instead of having to do it through litigation, you know, that's obviously the, the better plan. But the actions that we're undertaking take some time to do, the town, the roof requires bidding because it's the township that's doing it, and it will cost probably more than 10 grand, so it needs to go beyond, you know, it needs to go out for bidding, those are, those are underway. And for the stuff that needed to be ordered that was less than the cost that exceed the township's discretion to do so, that stuff has been ordered. And the folks are fully informed. Joe Celia is keeping those people informed. I've been in touch with them. I certainly appreciate you bringing it up, and it's, progress has been made in the last month.
That's good.
Thanks for, for checking.
Anything else on our new business? Item number 20, Other Business, Commissioner Demilio.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the things I want to bring up is the comprehensive plan update. This is something that Lori has been working on extensively for a very long time. It's something that we really need to complete in the township. Township and Lori spoke with all surrounding municipalities, and the only township interested in partnering on the comp plan is Radnor, so we are pursuing that partnership. Lori worked with Community Development Staff in the preparation of a request for proposals, RFP outlined. Radnor Township staff indicated that it will pursue funding commitments from its Board of Commissioners at their meeting, actually, this evening. Community Development Staff indicated that it had met with Radnor staff to discuss the creation of a steering committee comprised of six members from each community. Committee will meet to discuss appointments and the various interests in the township, and the RFP will require the selected planning consultant to work with the township on the submission of a municipal assistance program grant. Lori, do you want to add anything? And if we need to have another committee meeting, we did have a committee meeting several months ago, if we need to do another one, if we need to do it soon, I'd like to do it and get our committee, the committee members are here, Larry Holmes is on that committee, I'm on that committee. Mario is on the committee, and Andy.
I think that as soon as we get confirmation from Radnor that they've committed to the funding, that your committee could meet, and we could get started on, you know, how we're gonna go about making appointments to the steering committee, what representative groups would be included.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I have a couple of other things. I'd like to thank all of our emergency services throughout the year for what they do. It's been a very difficult year for the police department throughout the nation, and it seems to continue where police officers are just being ambushed. Our thoughts and prayers are with all police officers and their families. The other thing I want to bring up for our community, those in the, in the civic associations, to be careful about false rumors and spreading false rumors. Please do not put anything out that you not, you do not know is accurate. For example, we had something in the first ward where someone was, wanted to put out a blast that there was an armed robbery with a handgun, which was not true. So please be very careful about the information you disseminate to, to the residents through social media, whether it be Facebook or tweeting. I don't mind you checking with me, and we check with the police, police clarify these issues. Unfortunately, there are times that we cannot tell you the specifics of an incident that happened to protect innocent people and the residents, and also not to divulge information that would hinder any investigation that the police are conducting. And believe me, they get right on top of it, and they do, do a thorough investigation. And also think about our volunteer firefighters, who, no matter what time of the day, night, holiday, whether it be Christmas night if something occurs, they're out there, snow, if something occurs, they're out there, snow, rain, protecting us as well, and I thank each and every one of them for what they do. I also thank the Civic Association, the Westgate Civic Association. They hold their annual Christmas gathering at Westgate Park. Santa comes there, and it's a very nice event. And I, I will be with Jimmy Garrity this Friday.
That's right, this Friday, Steve.
For Toys for Tots.
Toys for Tots.
Santa's coming.
And Santa's going to be there, I can assure you of that.
Putting on the suit, Commissioner D'Amelio?
I am.
You will be a fine stand-in for the real Santa.
Are you saying I don't have to stuff my pillow?
I'm simply saying you'll be very convincing.
You done?
Is that it?
I don't know.
I also think you'll be a good Santa. You know, just briefly, encouraging to see the students from Archbishop Carroll here, whether it was for extra credit or not, I think civic engagement is important, particularly, you know, for everyone in the township and for everyone who came tonight to watch this meeting, but also anybody that watches on TV or on the YouTube channel. You know, township engagement is really, at this local level, sort of grassroots, and it's important, so. I also, this will be our last meeting until the New Year, so I want to wish everybody in the township a happy holidays. We, Oakmont Fire Department, we purchased some vehicles for them tonight. That was part of the budget, but they also toured the Third Ward yesterday, driving Santa around. I don't know if that was you, Steve, but Santa did come to visit the Third Ward yesterday, and I know a lot of the residents were appreciative of that, so thank you to Oakmont Fire Department. And hopefully everyone has a happy and healthy New Year, and looking forward to an exciting 2017 on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Segal?
Yeah, the Maryland Parks Annual Holiday Social Event is this coming Sunday. You can still register with Linda Tino. There's a wide range of event, of activities that evening, and I encourage people, it gets an enormous turnout. I would also recommend that for residents, because you're used to, I know people get my feeds and others on social media, but the township through Ally Rothman, who we hired this year as a social media person, has been really increasing the township's dissemination of information. So I strongly suggest, if you have not seen the township's Facebook page and have not subscribed to the feeds, you should start doing so. It really provides a lot of information, and all you have to do is just search "Haverford Township," and then you can subscribe to those feeds. And I commend Ally and the township staff for proactively putting out a tremendous amount of information, sometimes things that we hadn't even heard on the board, and it's very helpful. Finally, with the holidays, I wish everyone a safe and happy and healthy New Year and a happy holiday.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, thank you. As you all know, the College Avenue Bridge closed at the end of November, and I just want to thank our police department and, and our chief and deputy chief for the great work that they've done in trying to best mitigate the impact of this closure on the residents of the Fifth Ward and actually all of our township residents. We've had, we added additional stop signs at Cooper Town and College. They've done a significant amount of stop sign enforcement, and we have speed, speed posting signs, the flashing speed signs up on Buck, and, and we also acquired some additional ones. So we continue to do what we can to try to lessen the impact on our residents. And to that end, we're, Commissioner McCluskey from the Third Ward, and I will be hosting a public meeting on January 4th at 7:00. We invite the Third and Fifth Ward residents and all residents of the township to join us that night. We'll be there, obviously, hosting the meeting, along with our township manager, Larry Gentile, our chief, Chief Iola, Deputy Chief Hagan, and also representatives from Pendott will be there, and inviting all the public to, to be there to voice their concerns and to ask questions. And so we'll be getting more word out on, about, about that meeting, but urge you to attend if you can, if you have any concerns or complaints that you want to voice, that's a good opportunity to do it that night. Secondly, just want to express my condolences to Tim Denny, his family, from passing his mother. I read her obituary, and as Representative Santora said, she was an amazing lady, just amazing, the things that she did. I had no idea. And so, good, a lot of good stock in the Denny family, so. Sorry, I express my condolences to you, Tim, and the family.
The Pope, he stood something, what was it?
Papal metal.
Papal metal, she just, uh, didn't have the, didn't have the opportunity to know her well, but she, she obviously was an accomplished lady, so we'll miss her. Also want to thank Larry Gentile and Doc for the great job they've done with the leaf program this year. It's always a challenging logistic nightmare for the township with Public Works to, to manage not only trash and recycling, but leaf collection, and then if you throw in a snowstorm and bad weather, it really complicates the collection. So I think they do a very good job under pretty difficult circumstances, so. And finally, just want to wish, as Commissioner McCluskey said, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone. We have a lot to be thankful for as residents of Haverford Township and certainly as residents or citizens of the United States, so Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, thank you. In terms of the Sixth Ward, the entity that several years ago installed some new antenna, some new cellular data equipment throughout the township is, is, they're replacing some of their equipment, they're upgrading it, making some of the equipment bigger. One particular location in the, in the township is in the Sixth Ward. It was a location that several years ago generated some concern among those neighbors. We've met with Crown Castle and the neighbors to see about a different alternative location. There really doesn't appear to be one available in that locale. We've not completely ruled that out, but I'd say it's about 95% likely that it's going to have to go in the same place again. But Crown Castle is performing some tests and doing a number of things before, and providing them to the, to the residents that are there. So I've informed most of the residents, but for those of us, those who are seeing this for the first time, we should be getting more data on that. It will not be before the Property Committee until at least the January meeting, and I will report back to my colleagues on the Property Committee before, hopefully before they take their vote. But I do appreciate the efforts Crown Castle is making to accommodate the concerns of our neighbors. We have particular health and concerns, and kind of the geography of the neighborhood is such that a couple homeowners feel that it's too close to their, to their bedroom windows, and we're, we're trying to address that. I, I didn't know Mrs. Denny, I, I barely knew Mrs. Denny. I met her a couple times, but I, I, I know two of her sons, and I knew a third son, and I think we all get measured at the end of our lives by what we leave behind us on earth, and if that's so, then Mrs. Denny's going to be measured by some very successful children that she's had. It's my honor to know you guys, and would have been my honor to know your mom. I know the pain of the loss of a mother, I know the pain of an Irish boy eulogizing his mother, and I know what an outstanding example you were for the rest of your family, Tim, so just know that my thoughts and my prayers are with you and with everybody in the Denny family, and with your mom and with your dad in heaven. I'm coming to the end of my 11th year on this board, as is Mario. Andy is coming to the second end of his first year on this board, the Grover Cleveland of our board. Steve, you must be 13 now, I think Dan is nine. Bill, you're, you're nine, maybe 10, Jimmy's 175. Chris is seven, I believe. And Chris, and, and Kevin, you are coming to the end of your first, your first first year on this board. And Dan, you're nine, no, no, you're, you're in your eighth year. And I say that because it's Christmas time, and we think of peace on earth and goodwill toward men, and this was a very heated election season, and frankly, a very heated year in 2016 for all the work we undertook on behalf of the township, but I just have to say, it's been a privilege, privilege for these 11 years, and I like going into this holiday season, ending our night tonight on such a positive note, and, and with very successful budget negotiations, and frankly, with a feeling of collegiality among us that doesn't at any point diminish the advocacy we all bring to our own positions, but frankly, the camaraderie and the respect we show for one another, I think is obvious to the people who watch this. So I just wanted to say to all of you this holiday season that, that it's been my privilege and continues to be my privilege to work with this board, and I wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday season. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. McGarry?
Okay, I can only say, Tim, I knew Tim's mom well, and of course, Timmy and his family's been through a lot, not only with his mom. A couple months ago, he lost his brother, and John was a great fellow, very young and shouldn't have gone, but he left us, and the good news is, I heard Jonathan's holding the whole family together, Tim, so God bless them all. Let me get into a few other things that we have here. First of all, the Grange Estate with Mr. Sands from back here. The dinner they had the other night, the Christmas party, was very successful. And it, huge crowd. Thank you, Mr. Gentile. Larry was there, Chris Connell was there. Thank you for coming to it. And also, the trains at the Grange, they're going to go on through the Christmas holiday. Lori, am I right, it's going to be 1:00 to 4:00 on Saturdays and Sundays, except for Christmas Day and New Year's Day?
Christmas Eve.
And Christmas Eve. They won't be running it, okay. So come down there, 1:00 to 4:00 on Saturdays and Sundays, except for the days just mentioned. Also, in the paper, by the way, Joe Martin's wife did a wonderful job cooking.
Eventually, I used to go to home.
I know that, Joe. And his wife did a wonderful job cooking, and she did a wonderful job of telling Joe what to do, because Joe was just beside himself, so. So then today in the newspaper, I don't know if you saw in the Inquirer, it said Toys for Tots is not in good shape, and I guess it's in Philadelphia mainly, the donations are way down. Well, this Friday night, at the Brookline Firehouse, we have a Toys for Tots, and I believe in Haverford Township, we're doing very well. Last year, the fellow, the Marine, told me that Haverford Township gave more to Toys for Tots than anyone, so I hope we can keep that record going. And we want to thank also Brookline Fire Company for allowing us to use the firehouse, and Manoa Fire Company for their contributions that they continue to give us. And also, it is the tree lighting, it's going to be Brookline Firehouse, 6:30 this Friday night. And let me see what else we have here, Grange, oh, and this, this Sunday coming is Santa Sunday in the Brookline area, where the Brookline Fire Company Services, Santa Sunday, they go around on the fire engine, give out candy canes and things like that, so that's this coming Sunday. So there's, there's a lot going on, and I hope everybody can make the Toys for Tots on Friday night at Brookline Firehouse, or just go down and support the Grange Estate with the trains, because the man, the people there that do that work spend a heck of a lot of time. They spent literally two months just getting these ready for the children, so. And with that, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a healthy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Wechsler?
Yes, thank you. And Santa will also be making his rounds with the Manoa Fire Company on Saturday of this weekend, so he'll be in Steve's Ward and a lot of Mario's Ward, as they service both Westgate Hills and the Manoa section. And then on Sunday, he's going to move over to the Bon Air Fire Company, go through the Bon Air section and the Pilgrim Gardens section all day, from about 10:00 until about 2:00 on both days. So please, if you miss him, give me a call, we'll make sure a truck gets to your neighborhood. On behalf of the fire services, they've asked me to say thank you to the Commissioners for approving the purchase of the fire trucks, and a special thank you to Mr. Gentile, again, for his continued determination, sometimes fierce fighting, but they're, both companies are very happy of, with the result, and we put the equipment to good use, and so thank you for giving us, and the township, state-of-the-art gear and equipment to service the township. It's, it's actually a great thing for both fire companies, and all the fire companies, as their turns come up for new equipment. I'd also like to thank the Civic Association, another great year. They have their Christmas party tomorrow night. And then also, I'd offer my condolences to Tim and his family, and then also to the Burke family on my street. Mr. Joe Burke, another member of the Greatest Generation, passed away yesterday morning. Just, just a wonderful man, wonderful wife, 92 years young, finally succumbed to go back to the Lord, and his wife grieves him, his family that lives around the corner as well, just a great American, and just a very nice gentleman, so. And as always, have a happy and safe holidays, all the kids coming home from college, safe travel, and have a great family experience over the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Aliva?
Again, my condolences to, to Tim and his family. I know, I knew Mrs. Denny, and, and of course, you know, she, she lived through, as, as some of, some of us were saying, she lived through a lot, and, and she wouldn't, she wouldn't go quietly, she did not. And then, and then, you know, she went out her way. She went out with her children around her peacefully, and so it was, it was a nice, nice time for them, so. Again, my condolences to, to the family, so. I'd also like to talk about our president here, did a great job this year. What a wonderful job, your first year as president.
Well, thank you very much.
So really, I just have the agendas and how you put things together, and just really thoughtfully put things together, so thank you very much.
I greatly appreciate it, thank you.
And I want to thank the HPD, who was here tonight, for that demonstration, for the presentation tonight. What a great job this board has done in economic development for this township, and moving forward on it, and, and really, not just, not just talking about it, but doing it, putting their money where their mouth is, and you can see, as we presented tonight, the, the changes that have happened to this community, and, and, you know, we are, there are other communities looking at us, envious with some of the stuff that we do, and a lot of that thanks goes to this board, to Larry Gentile, to our staff, and, and to the HPD. So thank you very much, and I have nothing for...
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Mr. Secretary, it's the end of the year. Have you anything to say?
Well, I sincerely appreciate all the hard work that my staff do every day to provide the services, to make this a better and safer place for our families to live. I support, I thank you for all the support that this board provides and the leadership to allow us to do our job, and again, I wish everyone safe and happy holiday. I do want to mention, this board is aware, one of the main responsibilities I have is to make sure my staff go home safely every day, and I've never neglected on giving them the essential tools to the job, but unfortunately, last week, one of our employees, it's been a long time, sustained a very severe injury, and relating to HIPAA, I can't get into anything more detailed, but he has successfully made it through surgery. He's out of intensive care, but unfortunately, he'll be out for a very long time, but he will recover, so I wish him and his family the very best, and I'll continue to, at an executive session, continue to advise the board on the, the status of that employee, so thank you again.
Thank you very much. I would just, in closing, I would just like to say also to the Denny family, my condolences. I thought, what a, what a great gift. It's a benefit when you have a big family, that Mrs. Denny, for the last several years, had dinner with one of her children every single night of the week. And that's what a great thing with a big family, everybody always went to dinner. "I have mom tonight, I have mom tonight, I have mom tonight." What a wonderful thing. It was a funny thing, I was telling Tim, "Tim, I only have five children." And when my, when one of my sons heard that, "Dad, wasn't that a great thing that Denny family did?" I mean, I said, "Absolutely, it's a terrific thing." He goes, "Wait, you only have five, what's mom and mom going to do on the weekends?" I said, "We'll rent a kid out, they have two dogs, we can do that." But a wonderful thing that you were to, to your mother, and she was to you. Please keep all the staff's family in your prayers. Over the year, we've had other family members who, who have passed, and my heart goes out to them as well. Thank you very much to all the staff of Haverford Township over the year. What a tremendous job that you have done, be that the labor staff, the executive staff, everybody has absolutely been very gracious to, to me as well. I want to say thank you to this board for giving me the privilege to serve you as your president. It has been an honor. I thank Mr. Aliva for being Vice President of the Board, who has been very helpful to me at all times. And Mr. Gentile, thank you very much. Amy Cuthbertson, and I feel like I'm at the Academy here.
Don't forget our favorite, Pitbull.
Yeah, thank you very much, and our township engineer, and our police department. It really has been an experience, and I, I thank you for that honor. Thank you to the volunteer fire companies, and I want to say thank you to the citizens of Haverford Township. It is a wonderful community to be in. You've seen tonight where we have grown over the last 10 years. You have seen those who come to, well, those who even view the meeting on television. You've seen us in our good time, and not so much as our, our good times, but the thing is, it all has, it all comes out to the betterment of our community, to you, the people, who, through taxes, make these things happen, through your voice, that help make these things happen, and volunteer to help make these things happen. Haverford Township is a wonderful community. It's, it's obvious to the people that move here, to the people who stay here. So thank you once again to you, the citizens of Haverford Township, for allowing us to serve you the best possible way that we can. I wish you all a holy, happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and we will see you on January 3rd, Tuesday, at 7:30 PM, when this board reconvenes for reorganization, as well as to appoint those on the various boards and committees. Thank you very much, and have a safe and happy holiday. I will take, any, take a motion?
Zach and Ed.
Thank you very much.